There's no. If there's no objection, we'll get the meeting started. So I call this a meeting of the Lake Stevens Planning Commission to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. If anybody's got a flag available, I'm not quite sure. Or we'll go without a flag. All right, we'll just do pledge allegiance. All right, Dave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you everybody. And I see all commissioners present, so roll call is a full staff. And we'll move on to guest business. If anybody has anything they wish to bring to the commission's attention, this is your opportunity. Hearing and seeing nothing. Right, we will move on to our action item. That would be approve the minutes for February 2nd, 2022. Hopefully, all commissioners have reviewed. Do anybody have any comments before we do an emotion? Yes.
I have one, please. Thank you Chair Welch. In the minutes, it was omitted that there was a concern that I made about having the discussion lend itself to communities much more like our own. So regulation being one thing, but to align that analysis with other lakeside communities such as our own. And I mentioned several of those in that meeting.
Okay, yeah. All right, any other changes or modifications? Are you not gonna get a motion to approve the minutes with the changes as asked for by Commissioner Luxford?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? All right. Minutes are approved with the changes. Our next item is our discussion item, which is a briefing on the COP Plan Docket 2022, and I'll plan over to turn it over to Plain Manager Levitan.
All right, thank you Chair Welch. I'm gonna go ahead and share Ms. Green. I'm just gonna do a real quick PowerPoint just to outline the 2022 docket as is currently proposed. So just a little bit about the comprehensive plan docket as we do every year. The Growth Management Act allows cities to amend their comprehensive plan through an annual docketing process on an annual basis once per year. That can include both city-initiated amendments as well as citizen-initiated proposals. So I'm gonna just go over some of the very high-level city-initiated amendments, which will be very similar to past years. Basically, over the last few years and probably in 2022 and 2023, we're gonna continue to make minor amendments to the COP Plan as we prepare to do a more comprehensive update to the COP Plan and basically develop a new COP Plan as part of their state-mandated state-mandated periodic update to the comprehensive plan, which needs to be completed by June 30th of 2024. So the 2022 docket and the 2023 docket are aimed mostly at keeping it current with demographic information, things like planning efforts such as the Buildable Lands Report, which was adopted back in September, incorporating some of that information, especially into the land use and housing elements of the COP Plan. And then the other major component really of what we've been doing the last few years and will continue to do this here is updating capital projects as they relate to things like transportation, stormwater, parks and recreation, making sure that our list of capital projects stay current as part of our six-year and our 20-year capital programs. There are some, a couple other items outside of the standard element updates that are proposed as part of this year's docket. Those include some updates to the Shoreline Master Program, which were originally planned as part of the 2021 docket, but have been continued on to the 2022 docket. That would be towards the end of the year. We've received a grant from the Department of Ecology to do an inventory of the lake and to do, develop some user guides that would then be incorporated into that SMP update later in the year concurrently with the COP Plan update. And then also looking at doing an infrastructure analysis within the Lake Stevens Industrial Area, which comprised of the traditional Hartford Industrial Area as well as the Machias Area that was annexed last year, I believe April of last year. So that's kind of a high-level summary of the city-initiated amendments. As I mentioned, the city also grants citizens the opportunity to submit docket proposals. That can include both comprehensive plan amendments. It can also include zoning map amendments, zoning code amendments, basically any implementing ordinance of the comprehensive plan can be submitted as part of that annual docketing by citizens. So we did receive three requests this year. They're all within the same general area of the 20th Street Southeast Corridor. And we're currently still in the process of reviewing these. We kind of introduced them to the City Council last week at a very high level as part of their annual retreat. We're gonna also be bringing this back before them next week during a similar briefing with the City Council on February 22nd. But some of the preliminary thoughts and kind of related to these requests, you know, they may help the city better meet its 2040-40, 2044 growth targets. The County Council is just in the process of finalizing the growth targets, adopting the growth targets, which Snohomish County tomorrow has been working on for the last several months. The targets that are scheduled to be adopted by the County Council show that the city is projected to have about a 1,150 job deficit by 2044 when you compare that to the land capacity that's estimated within the Buildable Lands Report. So we're showing a deficit of jobs over the next 20 to 25 years. We're currently showing a surplus of population. When you reconcile the housing targets or their population targets, that's then translated to housing units. When you compare that to the Buildable Lands Report, we were showing a surplus. Just earlier this week, we received word that the County Council may be considering an amendment that would increase our population target upward by 2,500 residents in 2044, which might show the need for some additional zoning changes or some additional reasonable measures to help us meet our population targets in 2044. So there are some opportunities to look at some changes within the 20th Street area, within some of our other subareas, and then also changes citywide that we may need to be looking at. The bulk of that would be analyzed as part of the 2024 periodic update. But there are some opportunities based on the citizen-initiated docket request that we got this year to try to account for some of that potential growth. So just have a couple bullet points and then some maps. So this is request one. This is basically, we received a request from one individual property owner on 97th Drive Southeast. It's basically a cul-de-sac that's accessed from South Lake Stevens Road just east of State Route 9. So it's this parcel in orange. They're wanting to go from Commercial District to R812. R812 is currently located to the south and to the east as well as to the north. So that's a historically a single-family residential zone, but it also allows for townhouses, other middle housing types. And so we did receive that one request. The city would generally not approve just kind of a spot rezone like that. So we're looking at some other potential opportunities, including whether it might be appropriate for that entire cul-de-sac, whether there might be some additional areas that seem more appropriate for residential growth as opposed to employment growth. These numbers that are shown on the individual parcels are coming from the Buildable Lands Report. They show estimated job capacity by 2035. So you, it's hard to see unless you really zoom in, but it's not showing a whole lot of job capacity on 97th or even really to the larger parcels to the west. There are some natural resource issues. But so that is something that we would potentially consider. It is a existing single-family residential neighborhood. It was changed to, it was rezoned to Commercial District as part of the 2012 Subarea Plan that was adopted for 20th Street Southeast Corridor. But we're now about 10 years after that plan was adopted. So we thought it might be appropriate to look at, you know, some kind of more holistic potential changes to the subarea. So that was the first request. The second request. Shut this off. Second request was for several parcels on the north side of 20th Street. As you can see, just east of 99th, so fronting along 20th and then a number of other parcels. So the request on that is for the zoning to go from R812 up to MFR or multifamily residential. You know, just in kind of looking at it and looking at some of the surrounding land uses and land uses to the east and the frontage along 20th. We wanted to get some input on whether that also might be a good candidate either for mixed-use neighborhood or for commercial zoning. And the numbers that are shown on this slide are the residential capacity as opposed to the employment capacity, because this is currently zone residential. So the county's Buildable Lands Report shows a residential capacity and it shows just about 14 units. So that's not a whole lot of growth along, you know, a pretty major corridor there on 20th. So there might be some opportunities to look at this proposal or something similar or to extend some potential zoning changes further to the north on 99th. So we wanted to have that as part of kind of the larger conversations about potential changes within the 20th Street Corridor. And then the third one was for a couple of parcels that are on the south side of 20th, just east of South Lake Stevens Road, kind of to the southeast of Tom Thumb. That would be going from, proposed to be going from R812 to the Commercial District, which is located to the north, the kind of the areas in red. So this is the parcel right here. It's showing limited residential capacity right now based on that R812 zoning. It's only showing the capacity for one additional unit. And it is directly adjacent or across the street from residential, sorry, from Commercial District zoning. And there's also other Commercial District and it's obviously got frontage right along 20th. So that's a number, another one that might have the opportunity to help us to meet our employment target, kind of at a very localized scale, but obviously, you know, potential incremental effects, depending on what else goes on within the within the city and within the various subareas. So that's kind of the overview of the citizen-initiated proposals. Staff was basically wanting to get some guidance from the Planning Commission and the City Council before we move on to public hearings on whether we should be evaluating these proposals individually or whether we should be taking kind of a broader look at land uses and zoning within the corridor and within specifically the subarea plan. Well, as I mentioned, we'll be discussing this with the City Council on February 22nd during a similar briefing. And then our plan as of now is to move forward to the public hearing with the Planning Commission on March 2nd where you would make a recommendation on ratification of the docket to the City Council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and I, kind of the focus that we'd like is, you know, on the city-initiated amendments. If you think that there's anything else that really needs to be added and then specifically on the citizen proposals, kind of any general thoughts? Any thoughts on the 20th Street Corridor? And happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Dave. Is there, I guess, open up to the commissioners on any comments or questions they have of staff or amongst each other?
Yeah, I can start. I have a question. So on number, let's see, on the, on the second group of parcels, I was just, yeah, so that, that slide right there. I guess, so how I understand it, you know, we're moving from R8 to R12 to multifamily residential, which is essentially 15 units per acre. So where did like the, see that one right there? If it's one unit per acre, shouldn't that, I mean, at R8, that's gonna be more than one unit. So I guess I'm confused on where, like, I understand that's trying to show that obviously it could be higher density, you know, we could get more units. I know what it's trying to show, but I don't understand like why those two that say one right there, those are like 16,000 square foot lots, I think.
Yeah.
How would that be one unit?
Yeah, so the model, you know, I'm not an expert on the model for the Buildable Lands Report. It factors in a whole lot of different variables. So I'd have to look in, I mean, it accounts for both property values, you know, there's, there's basically a formula that goes in there where they assume a certain level of redevelopment and whether that's gonna be kind of minor infill development versus, you know, if the land value is so much greater than the improved value, they assume that it might just be completely scraped and redeveloped as new, which obviously offers oftentimes more redevelopment potential. And so I didn't wanna, you know, I kind of debated whether to put these numbers on there or not, just so we didn't get into them too much. I didn't wanna focus on, on the specifics of the redevelopment or infill development potential on these. I mostly just wanted to show kind of at a high level that there's, you know, if an area like this were to change to multifamily residential or the other ones were to kind of go in the other direction, going from commercial back to residential, there wasn't a whole lot of either employment capacity or population capacity that's shown within the Buildable Lands Report at this point. So it's not like we would be losing a whole lot of our population capacity or our employment capacity if we were to entertain zoning changes on some of these lots.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think overall, especially with a lot of the just some of the other, what, the, the city-initiated stuff, I'm fully on board all that, you know, that seems similar to the previous years. And I think just with these three parcels on the citizen-initiated stuff, I need to see more, you know, information on it. It'd be nice. Like I have all the access on my side, but I think for the other commissioners sometimes, especially when we're doing a first run-through, if we're gonna give some, you know, kind of constructive feedback and something valuable to you. You know, it's nice to have just the addresses and things like that. Some, you know, I feel like we, I kind of had to backdoor to find it all, which, and like I said, once I went through it all, it wasn't, I don't think it's anything that I'm necessarily, you know, against. I, I think the only thing that, I, I think it's important for the city to continue with, you know, their thoughts on those areas and how to, you know, fully optimize them. And I, and I just, I lean on the city strongly that they also like greatly consider, you know, obviously, the long-term effects of traffic and congestion and things like that. And I know you guys all are. But every time we see stuff like this, I think of those areas. I think of a lot of the R8, you know, the congestion that's already there. And then on top of that too, you know, if I'm being fully upfront, I know that the city takes a lot of advice from developers, you know, so obviously they're self, they're, they're self-interested. I'm not saying it's not good for the city and all that stuff. But sometimes I do, you know, wanna make sure the city's not getting ahead of themselves as they continue to, you know, push forward. And I know there's Growth Management Acts, but the people sometimes telling you about the Growth Management Acts also, you know, I wonder where their numbers come from, but you know, overall, like I said, I think everything, you know, you know, I, I wouldn't, I don't have enough here to say to, to say how I feel about those specific parcels, but I look forward to, you know, what the city brings in the, in the next meeting. And I think, you know, we will be ready to specifically kind of, you know, have a more guided discussion on it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that feedback and can definitely provide maybe some more user-friendly maps and, and property information in the future. Wanted to just kind of give a general assessment of where these were. So some of the labels maybe aren't super easy to read. As far as the 20th Streets Corridor, you know, similar to our other subareas, there was a Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement that was prepared during the preparation of the subarea plan. It basically allows for a certain amount of residential and commercial development. So we would assess kind of impacts to those kind of basically capacity, at least on the environmental impacts assessment side of things as part of any changes to this. Individual proposals would obviously still be required to go through the required traffic review at the project level. But no, I, I appreciate the concerns and the feedback on that.
Oh, yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate it too. This was great. And like I said, it's fresh in my head too, where my mom lives right by Lundine Park, right, right, right by there. And there's roundabouts on each side. And then they just put in that apartment, you know, the, I think the 64-unit apartment building. So I look at all that and I know that she, you know, is a what, 50-year citizen is, is concerned as well. So I just wanna make sure, you know, I'm sure the city receives phone calls as well. So I know you know, but just, you know, I think that's important, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Davis.
Um, I just wanted to give feedback on the, the idea of whether we would like to consider these citizen-initiated amendments individually or broader. And I was just, I'm shocked that it has been 10 years since we did the 20th Street Subarea Plan. It seems like it's yesterday, but I guess my inclination is to kind of consider them holistically with the subarea plan. Things have definitely changed in the last 10 years. So that, that would, I think, be a, my inclination for an approach.
Does the, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I forgot to pull up the zoning. Does the parcel three, does that fall under our 20th Street Subarea Plan? Did we go that far down past that area?
So this, so this, the request three?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the subarea plan boundaries. So it's this dash line. So it does include it. It kind of comes out basically to here. So it's in the kind of the eastern edge of it. But it is within the subarea boundary. So all three proposals are within the, within the subarea corridor.
All right. Commissioner Hudson.
Oh, no. If someone was ahead of me, I can't see you.
No, fine. I'm opening the floor to Commissioner Hudson. Then after that, Commissioner Door.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So I am looking at a couple of different things. One, normally when we have a packet like this, we have the city, citizen-initiated letters attached to it. And this one had none of those. Do we know what the citizen-initiated argument was for?
Yeah, so we do have those. I mean, we, because this was a brief, we would include those as part of the, of the public hearing. We wanted to kind of give a higher level overview of kind of of the general discussion before we got into the individual proposals and how we should be evaluating the proposals, but we don't always have kind of this similar briefing before we get onto the public hearing, but you will be getting that information. I can pull those up really quickly. You know, for request one, it was from an individual property owner. It's basically, so let me go back to that one. So for this one, the application was basically, that's the only vacant parcel on 97th Drive Southeast. It's surrounded by existing single-family residences. This was an area that used to have residential zoning, but as part of the 2012 subarea process was added on as the Commercial District, basically extended east of SR9. These are the, if you look kind of this, it becomes R812 just directly east of there and also to the south. They, there, I've, the city has received a couple of pre-application proposals kind of in this area, the parcel to the west, and then a couple down here right off of South Lake Stevens, but hasn't seen anything move forward. Obviously, residential land values have kind of skyrocketed and the cost of homes have. So this parcel in orange, the one that submitted the request, is the only vacant parcel on there. And because they do not have an existing home, they can't build a new home. You know, these existing houses are considered legal non-conforming. They can be, you know, essentially have improvements done to them, you know, if they meet our non-conforming code thresholds, but this property is not able to build a new house. So they want to be able to sell the property to build residential because they believe that this area is continued, going to continue to be residential for the foreseeable future. And under that commercial zoning, they believe that they essentially don't have much value in the land because nobody is going to build, you know, a commercial development on one parcel in the middle of a residential neighborhood is the, is the kind of the explanation on that one.
And I, I respect that. Who's the applicant?
The applicants, I'm gonna have to pull up her name. And Russ, did you wanna jump in? I can pull that up.
Yes, thank you. So I also just wanted to make a slight correction to a couple of the comments. When the subarea plan was adopted, this area was not included as a commercial designation. This came before the Planning Commission, oh, I wanna say four years ago. I'll go back and verify that, but that was the last time that the City Council had sort of asked that we revisit some of the zoning designations. And I actually want to say that at that time, the Planning Commission recommended against changing this neighborhood from residential to commercial, and we'll go back and verify that. And so it's sort of here in front of us again several years later with no change. And now we have new buildable lands data that again, shows limited capacity without obviously a complete assemblage of all of those properties. So anyway, just for, for a point of reference, that wasn't part of the original subarea plan. It had been a later amendment. And now the, the folks that are impacted have come back to the city asking for a, a change back. And that's why we wanted to sort of frame this tonight in terms of all of the changes. And staff may even have some additional recommendations near the 99th area that might, might be more appropriate for commercial with larger, larger properties. So anyway, I think as Commissioner Davis said, it's probably appropriate to look at this holistically so we can put all of the pieces together, new growth targets, new buildable lands numbers, and also consider these citizen-initiated applications concurrently.
I, I appreciate your clarification. I was there. I get it. Is it appropriate that we are discussing this in two weeks? And, and moving it on to City Council in four weeks?
I don't think we're moving to approve the zoning change right on the second. Isn't it just to whether or not we want to go on the docket the way it is, or am I mistaken there?
Just to set the docket for future study. So you'll be looking at this for several months.
Commissioner Hudson, before I go over to Commissioner, do you got anything else?
Um, uh, there were a couple other comments specific to properties and alignment and feedback from the current folks that have been impacted by some of the things that we have done in the past. We did a land lock, a land swap a couple of years ago that I regret voting on. So I was just making sure that this doesn't have any sort of flavor of that. But no, my notes are, at this point, only concerning the timing of putting this on a docket and not having the citizen-initiated letters associated with our packet this evening. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Commissioner Door.
I just wanted to thank Planning Manager Levitan. He had had a couple of questions for us about kind of whether we had anything else to add or whether, you know, these things, these citizen-initiated pieces would be collected as one or, or in part put on there. And I didn't have anything else to add other than I would suggest that, you know, we take a look at each of these citizen-initiated ones independently of each other, but in reference to kind of the area that they are, that they exist within, particularly this first one where, you know, just looking at the map, you know, it kind of sticks out like a sore thumb to have that one piece of R812 in a Commercial District. So maybe, maybe more holistic view is what's required. And it sounds, it sounds like based on what Plan Director Wright is saying, you know, we would be able to have that conversation over the next several sessions. And hopefully with some additional information. I know I was flipping between Google Maps and this presentation just to see kind of refresh my memory of what's down that way. And so, you know, the more, the more information I have, you know, I think the more And so, you know, the more, the more information I have, you know, I think the better informed we all are. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I've actually had my Google's map up here as I'm looking at these properties as we talk about it. Um, Russ and uh, and David, um, since on Prop One, the position one from citizen. Since it's just one, one pot, one property, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the map. Um. Why is so much of a swath of land was included then in this? Area instead of maybe just cutting out that one little neighborhood, that one group of, that one cul-de-sac street. Um, maybe only cutting that little section out, not the entire path, I guess, there's, or that that whole big area.
Well, this map is only intended to show kind of the, where this one individual parcel in Orange is located and what the existing zoning is surrounding it. We're not proposing any other changes. I think what Russ and I have been discussing is, and you know, some of his. I apologize for not having the history of the, of the zoning amendments. I wasn't here four years ago, so I apologize for speaking incorrectly. Um, you know, would it make more sense, you know, if this seems like it's gonna. Remain residential and that there isn't really a whole lot of employment capacity or potential for commercial redevelopment within this area on. Ninety-seventh, what we look at, you know, as part of a larger, more holistic assessment of the subarea. Um, you know, would you change all of this back potentially to RA twelve, um, since it's all residential in nature right now? Would you maybe include these areas that are closer to Twentieth still as commercial district? That's something that could be docketed as a, as kind of a more holistic review of zoning. Um, and that, you know, we would continue to look at um over the next few weeks, and so that was the general question like. Um, I had noted that, you know, we're generally not going to spot rezone this, so would we look at? Um, you know, having this whole east side of Ninety-seventh, the whole cul-de-sac. Um, reverting to residential, which would basically undo what was done four years ago. Um, or whether there's some other alternative, so that would be something, you know, when we talk about a more holistic approach, that would, would, that's what would be included in that.
Cause I rem, yeah, cause I remember, I'll say I was on the council when this was redone. Uh, I remember the idea was mainly to try to collect those large parcels along nine. As commercial, that was the biggest push was to get those because of the commercial across the street on Highway Nine, that we. Those would be best for commercial, cause they're right along the, the, of that major roadway, and I. I guess I'd like to see at least. Personally, I'd like to see at least the first one, and the second one at least, maybe part of the. Maybe reopening the subarea plant, they want to look at that as a possibility. But I hate to see personally, I mean, I know we're not making a decision today. Uh, I hate to see um. All that area go back, all the area go back to residential, when we're just now getting Costco, and the idea was to. Once you got, once we got a anchor store on Twentieth Street like Costco. Uh, what we did is before they were coming, but the idea was to get somebody like that. And then see what would eventually grow on Twentieth Street because we got the one big anchor spot, and then once Costco said they wanted to come. We said, great, that is now the anchor we've always want, we've been wanting on Twentieth Street. And that's why so much of it's now zone commercial, was eventually things would grow from there. That was the idea. Of going so much commercial on Twentieth Street. So I would personally hate to eliminate all that as it is right now. But I could definitely see cutting out those, that one neighborhood, and with everything to the. East of that already being residential, just keep moving that map maybe over a little bit, because it is just one, one property. I can see it on the map, yeah, there's, it's, I can see where that property does not have anything on it except for trees right now, so. Um, that's where I would see that personally, not instead of that whole entire. A whole entire area being changed personally, I don't think that.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, sorry, and sorry, just if my visuals were terrible. Um, you know, the, you know, I think the, the. The greatest extent of potentially reverting back to residential would, would be essentially Ninety-seventh of the cul-de-sac. We're not proposing. Um, at least initially, that this would be, that these areas along nine, um, kind of, we understand the legislative intent of that in the, in the council direction. You know, kind of throughout the subarea plan, and especially since Costco or some other anchor tenant came in. Um, so yeah, that, that's, you know, wasn't kind of what the intent was on this.
Okay, Commissioner Huxford.
No, and and you just uh better clarified my concerns, my gut check over this when I saw a packet when it came out last week. Is that we did a land swap to make sure that Nineties Two had the ability to do residential for this to be commercial. We landlocked those people in. I remember um council member at that time. Uh, Commissioner member Peter Shagan voting against that, cause he did not like the fact that this was landlocked in there. So um, my concern is exactly what you just said. Perhaps this is something that needs to be scaled back. And not presented in such a way that is blanketed, uh, because if anybody sees this packet tonight, that's what it looks like. And that's where I was having some chest pains over it, and I appreciate you being so eloquent in your depiction of that, um, Chair Welch.
Yeah, uh, thank you, cause that's exactly when I first saw uh that first property, uh, the first thing, I was like. Wait, but that's a, we just got Costco, that's against everything we went for.
Yeah, and that, that's definitely not the intent. It's just showing the current zoning, which shows up in the red, and then just the one parcel. In the middle of that, so yeah, there it was no intention of showing that or even recommending that that whole area. Would revert to a residential zone, just specifically looking at this neighborhood. So, you know, again, just sort of a, a high-level conversation tonight, that we have a lot of applications that are swirling around Twentieth. And how do we, we treat them as we look at these other larger regional growth topics and then our own, own plan?
Okay, cause I want to say, I don't remember where the properties are. I remember we also, the city sold. What, nine or more properties ourselves to a commercial developer about four years ago, about the same time we did the zonings, not very far. Um, and I don't remember where they fall on this map, but um, I don't remember off the top of my head, but um. Yeah, so I'm glad it's just a, that maybe this is a smaller scale of an issue than what it looks on the map. I know Commissioner Doris said he would like to take these up separately. Does anybody have a problem with them being separate, or they, should they be? Part of a subarea plan or just as one big proposal? Anybody else have any opinion on how they should be dealt with each initiative?
I think I agree with the, what the last commissioner said, where, you know, obviously overall, we want it to be conforming to the neighborhood and all that. But I think if you look at him individually with the uh, you know, thought of the overall plan in the back of your head, um. But I do think that, you know, to Commissioner uh Welch's and Huxford's point, uh, if you blanket it all, um, it definitely is. You know, it, it's easier to have things slip through the cracks, so I guess my, my vote would definitely be to, to look at them individually from just these three cases. You know, in the city, look at those, um, but, you know, use that in order to have a long-term plan and in order to uh. You know, kind of go into the future of those neighborhoods.
Uh, a, a thought misses to uh, uh, David and Russ, um. If we take them individually, will they still be, how does the traffic impact, environmental impact then also be? Adjusted if, cause since they're all in the same, they basically feed onto the same, same major roadways. And have the same pretty much uh store mart and other things. Can they be looked at separately, or is, because of all that, do they need to be looked at simultaneously?
When we get to our, our CIPA analysis, we are going to have to look at them cumulatively. Whether um they would each be submitting their own environmental checklists that docketed, and so we would have to look at all of those together. To determine how that fit under the EIS for the, the Twentieth Street. And looking at, you know, again, if we required them to submit traffic studies or something like that to show us the impacts, we would have to look at. Again, all of those together, um, as it relates to the planned action.
Cause each one of their traffic impacts would not count with the others being changed then, so it'd be. Kind of a, would that be too discombobulated, I guess, or disconnected? Or should it just be a whole entire subarea plan? Does it need to be reopened, so we can look at how all this will impact Twentieth Street?
And I think maybe somewhere in between. I don't think that we're suggesting a wholesale reopening of the subarea plan, but I think what staff. Is suggesting, and maybe it's what the commissioners are saying as well, that we need to look at the individual merits of each application. Do they meet the comprehensive plan goals and criteria for consistency of going through a land use and a map change? But then as far as the city's perspective, we need to do uh a comprehensive and cumulative review of that again. Is, is I'm suggesting we look at new, some new information from buildable lands, new growth targets, to make sure that we're still planning efficiently. And using these as examples or uh expanding on potentially, or making recommendations to expand areas. Or retract areas as presented by these applicants.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any other comments? This is just a discussion item. We'll have the public hearing at the next regular meeting, so.
Yeah, I just have, uh, just one more. Um, first, thanks to the city. Um, I, I realize we're being critical on some of it, but I appreciate you guys. You know, instead of just having this at the public hearing, you know, giving us the brief over, um, so I appreciate that. Uh, but secondly, I just, I. I think as Commissioner Huxford said with that next public hearing, if we can just have more information from the applicants and, and from, just to, to get the overall picture. Um, just cause I see like, for instance, the, the third lot, I see the third lot is pending right now, so is the applicant. You know, the new buyer is, is it the old? Um, I'd just like to see a lot of that information, just to see where, where it's stemming from.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And I, I think the thought as far as kind of providing the higher levels in deciding whether we docket these. Individually or if, you know, we get direction from the planning commissioner, city council, you know, if, if we essentially rolled this into. A city-initiated amendment, um, that was kind of the general thought, but we can definitely provide that, that information. Thank you.
Um, is there a timeline on this? Is there a reason that we're doing to a public hearing on the second and, and city council on the twenty-second? Other than pending sales?
No, this is just the, the process, the commission follows every year. We set a docket. Uh, the only thing that was a bit unusual this year is we had three. Citizen-initiated applications within a pretty close proximity, so we wanted to bring your attention to that and just have this discussion. Uh, about that proximity, and then like we do every year, we'll bring you the analysis sheets, all of the complete docket applications. As part of the record, so you'll have the full and complete record, and then council has to set that docket early in the year, so we can get to work. And we're still not talking about this in, um, you know, mid-year, so this is the process we follow every year. It's part of our work program. And so the only difference again is just bringing this to you with a. A first briefing that's just at this larger scale because of how many citizen-initiated applications that we have that we typically don't.
Uh, thank you, Russ. So this would then just add this to our to-do list for the year. Um, if I understand that right.
Yes.
Okay, um. At the public hearing, do we have to decide then if this is all gonna be considered as a whole or individual projects? As it's presented to the council or not?
It, it'll be presented to the council, um, if the, the commission has a strong recommendation. One way or another, individually, you can choose to docket any. Or none of these items, and then make that recommendation to the council. You can also make a recommendation, as we've talked about, to look at them. Individually or, you know, a broader review. And then the only reason also again that the council's being briefed is, is the similar to how come you're being briefed in additional time? If there's lots of things, um, recently at the council's retreat, they've definitely queued in on. Uh, a few development trends that they would like to, to take a look at, not necessarily thinking about Twentieth Street. But they've definitely had an interest in some land use topics and revisiting probably some of our subareas. More the Lake Stevens Center is what they were thinking about, but just want to present all of this information to them.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other comments before we move on and we can have this public hearing and uh, is that how we're gonna approach this, our docket? Or how we're gonna place on the docket if we are? Any other questions or comments? Thank you all very much. That was a. A very good discussion. I know it's a kind of an important issue, and these are. Big area of this, of the city that's been, a lot of growth is going on, so it's important that we get this, get this right, and I think your guys is a. Your all's discussion is quite fruitful leading, leading to this, so thank you all so much. With that, we'll move on to commissioners' reports, and I will go around on how my screen looks and with Commissioner Cronin.
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Doer.
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Um, I was, uh, just wanted to be on record, since I was delayed by travel last meeting unexpectedly and wasn't able to attend. I wanted to go on record thanking Commissioner Osland for her time with us. Um, and it was great working with her and, um, hopefully she'll, we'll see her again. Um, and then also, I just was curious if later, um, maybe during the planning director's report, I, I'm curious about what, uh, where we are in replacing. Her on the commission, um, in the coming year.
Thank you. Commissioner Huxford.
And I appreciate and concur with Commissioner Davis. Thank you so much for bringing that up this, tonight. I don't know if it was brought up at our last meeting or not, it wasn't in the minutes. And it should be. Uh, we had discussed in closing last week, or last meeting, and I appreciate the follow-up. Um, but is the House bill that we were concerned about, one seven eight two, is that the one that was killed today? Is that the one that died on the floor of the? Committee, without a vote, by the way?
It didn't make it to the, it didn't make the deadline to make it to the floor.
There you go. There you go. I was in my car and I didn't want to crash, so I didn't want to like Google, but um, that's exactly what I needed to know. Thank you, and thank, thank you, everybody that communicated on that. That was, that was not, that was not okay. That was not okay.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Huxford, is that it?
That's it.
Sorry about that. Uh, Commissioner Hall.
Um, yeah, I was just sort of curious, um, is there going to be sometime in the near future where we're actually gonna like maybe meet in person? Or are we gonna be always doing the zooming? Is there gonna be any changes?
Um, we are going to be meeting around March to talk about sort of what we're doing with reopening. The city council has transitioned to a hybrid approach, and what the city council has recently talked about is maintaining. A hybrid approach for their meetings, their preferences to have members in person if they're in town and available. Um, what we've seen across a lot of the boards is more um citizen engagement through the Zoom platform. So my guess is when we go in person again with planning commission, we will also maintain that, that hybrid. Um, function to make sure that lots of different folks can engage.
Okay, that sounds great, cause one of the things that I've noticed is that we don't seem to get as many people at our meetings. Like, you know, when we were meeting in person, they would be in the audience and you could see them, and you could see if they were agreeing or confused, and. With the zooming thing, it's like, some people don't need, know how to do the zoom thing, right? Or they don't have the equipment to do it, so that's why I was kind of hoping we would be in person, but at least if we did a hybrid, then that would be also very helpful. So, thank you. That was it.
Um, I'll take my time and say I want to also thank uh, uh, Commissioner Osland's for her service to the city. And uh, also, I didn't get a chance, uh, did, completely forgot to uh, thank Commissioner Cronin on his year of chairmanship. And uh, thank you for his, all of his hard work, and uh, to all of you all for a great year. We had a lot done, and we got a lot coming on this year. Um, I would agree with the idea of, hopefully we can go to a hybrid, like that is that people can either come to see us in person or. If their schedule's too busy, that they can just dial in and be able to make a comment, or uh, if someone has uh a health issue, they don't have. That they can just dial in and be able to make a comment or, uh, if someone has a health issue, they don't have to then, they can still participate. Commissioners can without actually having to be there. As someone who, who is currently getting over COVID right now, I haven't left my house in two weeks, so. So I understand how it can be not easy to make all these meetings. So other than that, I think I am done and can turn it over to the plan director.
Great. Commissioner Huxford sort of made the, the one announcement I wanted you all to hear that seventeen eighty-two. Didn't pass off the floor. We've been at sort of a fevered pitch over the last. A couple of weeks seemed like responding daily to changes as they went through. Council member Peter Shagan testified when that was at the appropriations committee. And again, just lots of communication to our delegates and our representatives at Association of Washington Cities. So yes, for right now, that's not passed and the message that's going forward is if they're, if this is brought back in the future. That cities need to be engaged and other stakeholders need to be engaged and help craft this legislation. Since it's so personal to every community and what their, their vision is and incapacity and capability. Also just wanted to share that the city council had had their retreat last weekend. They talked about a couple of different economic development topics. Number one, they went through the final report from urban three. You had seen some of the pieces of that at your last meeting. We also have recruiter that we're working with called retail strategies. They saw the basic information that they'd put together so far. And then we had discussions about, you know, where to go with the city campus and some other capital projects moving forward. And transportation benefit district and a variety of things, great conversation. And lots of things that will come back and affect at least the planning and community development and probably a bit onto your work program as well.
I thank you. Any other questions, comments that are good for the order before we adjourn? So our next meeting will be what, March second at six P M, correct? And we'll still remain zoom at this time until after the city makes their, a decision on how to move forward from here. All right, with, with all that, do I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I got a motion a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you all so much. You guys have a lovely evening.
Yeah, have a great.